Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to our webinar, our town hall for the Pomona Unified School District on the reopening of schools. My name is Kristana Wachs Harper. I'm the Administrative Director for People and Community Services. I'm going to pause so that we can share information with you regarding translation. This is Ramundo. You're on mute.
Buenos dias a todos. Queremos darles la bienvenida y recordarles que abajo tenemos un lugarcito donde tenemos un círculo, donde tenemos interpretación en español para todos que necesitan traducción. Gracias.
Thank you, Mrs. Ramundo. I'm going to then introduce our Superintendent, Mr. Richard Martinez, and he will introduce our Board President.
Sure. Thank you very much, Dr. Wachs Harper. We do have a couple of board members online right now, so thank you both for being online. President Coniger Macklin is with us along with Board Member Dr. Roberta Proman. So we'll start with the President and then move on to Dr. Proman, and then I have a couple of words, and then we'll give it back to you.
Ah, thank you, Mr. Martinez. It's always delightful to be here and to be, to participate on the chat today, to talk about and provide our parents with information. Thank you so much for attending. We have had tremendous success with the number of participants, and it's really quite amazing, over a thousand at certain points. So we hope to keep up the attendance, to keep our parents well informed, and we certainly, certainly appreciate any opportunity to engage. So, thank you all, Dr. Harps Walker, Mr. Martinez, and our parents.
Dr. Proman.
Thank you. Good afternoon to everyone. I'm joining you here from Montana where I came to visit my daughter. I haven't seen her in numerous months, so it's wonderful to see her face again. They're also struggling with the same things that we are in California, although to a lesser degree, but, but they're also struggling with, with, with those things in terms of what they're going to do with school in the fall, and everyone's talking about it here in Montana as well. Thank you, everyone, for joining again. I've had great conversations this week with our parents and educators regarding our, our next steps, how, how we're going to make it through this all together as a family, and we've gotten great suggestions, so thank you to all of you who are providing those suggestions. Our ears are open and we're listening, so, so, so thank you so much for that. You know, I, I just want you to know that on behalf of, of everyone, the school district or school board, of course, we just want to keep your children safe. It's always been our number one priority and remains so, and I don't mean only, only physically, but also emotionally, and we want to keep them socially and emotionally healthy. So, so with that, thank you again all for, for joining us today. I'll only be able to stay on for, for a short time today, but, but thank you to our Superintendent Martinez and all our staff and everyone who's working to get you all the information. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Dr. Proman, and thank you, Ms. Coniger Macklin. We appreciate your time, even on a vacation. Dr. Proman, I really thought that you were going to take a day off, so we appreciate your time that you're giving our, our community, and, and I know Ms. Coniger Macklin, you're so crazy busy. She, she runs an entire county, folks, just want you to know, she is general counsel to San Diego. Not many people know that, and so she has a huge responsibility, so thank you for giving up this time to our families. I wanted to share something with you. There's a couple of things, I feel like a commercial. There's something called US Census. I'm going to say this, you're going to hear this a lot from Ms. Tatiana Gomez, it's critical that you do the census, and we will be there to support you and help you as a school district and from Ms. Dr. Wachs Harper's office, and then Marmalejo Ramundo, from these two individuals, they could support you in ensuring that your family's complete, that it's important that we're represented in Pomona, so please take the time to take that census, do this. It's a 10-minute, it's very quick, and it's not invasive, it's something that just gives the US government some, some assistance in understanding of what our community makeup looks like. So thank you very much, I appreciate that. The other item I wanted to share with you is you've been hearing on the news, will districts file for waiver for elementary students? Because some parents are saying, is it possible that students in elementary school could come back to school as early as August 11th in Los Angeles County? So I wanted to share with you that at this point, the recommendation I have for the Board of Education is based on the numbers of those that have coronavirus in this community and the high numbers at the hospitals far as capacity, we won't be filing for a waiver for August 11th. We are giving consideration for after the first quarter, so we're looking at that October period, and depending on the numbers of our community with coronavirus, there is a possibility that we could bring back the primary grade levels. I'm talking about TK, K1, 2, 3. But again, those are conversations with you parents, with our union groups, with our Board of Education, and of course Department of Public Health. So we often be in agreement that this is the right thing to do, and being that that's the first group that I would consider, and the county considers a safer group to bring back to a school system, but I just wanted you to be aware of that and share that with others. We will put that out to let you know that that is the direction that we are considering, and that's not to file for a waiver for August 11th, but to consider that conversation and that consideration for after the first quarter of the school year. So I wanted to share that with you before we go on, and I think those commercials are over. Dr. Wachs Harper, I'm going to let you have the floor once again, and we'll be here to listen, and just to let everyone know, the Board of Education will self-regulate themselves. We want to make sure that there's no more than two board members at a time in this conversation to ensure that we're not at all violating the Brown Act. So two will be on probably till approximately 2:00 or 2:15, and then two others could be on at 2:15 to 3 o'clock, just to give you that information. So, again, Dr. Wachs Harper, it's all yours.
Thank you so much, Mr. Martinez. As we go forward, I also wanted to recognize that we have our Deputy Superintendent in the room, Mr. Darren Knowles. He will either wave or say something to us, Mr. Knowles.
Hi, thank you, Kristana. I really appreciate all the parents and everybody coming on to join us and, and get it, get more information about where we're going. We appreciate your support. I think we can all recognize that this has been a, a quick-changing event. It changes day-to-day sometimes, and so we really appreciate you guys. We're going to offer a great program in the fall, and again, if you have questions, we're here for you, and Kristana, thank you so much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Knowles, and we also have Mr. Oliver Yunaka, our Public Information Officer, Mr. Yunaka.
Thank you so much, Dr. Wachs Harper. Hello, parents. I'm here to support our People and Community Services Division. I'll be in the background supporting with Q and A as I did during the last meeting, and simultaneously, the team, the Public Information Office team, and myself, we're working on a parent resource guide for you, so lots of great things going on, and I echo the sentiments of our Deputy Superintendent. We are looking forward to the upcoming program this fall, and thank you so much for your time. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Yunaka. I want to just take a few minutes to just share with you our staff, it takes quite a team to put the webinars together. We have Tatiana Gomez, who is our Coordinator in Child Welfare and Attendance, and also our Program Administrator in Training for our Community Schools. She is working with our coordinators, Melissa Ayala and Julie Cortez, as well as our Case Worker Specialist, Davina Polvis and Crystal Lopez. They are our Community School staff. We also have interpreting for us, Teresa Ortiz. Thank you so much. She is one of our Case Worker Specialists as well in People and Community Services. Diana Marmalejo Ramundo, our Coordinator, People and Community Services. Tony Ganchandani, our Clerk, as well as Maria Garcia, our Staff Assistant. Elizabeth Alfaro, our Admin Secretary. Dennis Rivera in Instructional Technology. And starting our presentation today will be our, two of our Teacher Specialists. We are so thankful for our team of Teacher Specialists. They support instruction system-wide, and today is actually a response to many of the questions that we have had during our town halls around technology. What is it? How does it work? How do I turn this Chromebook on? All of those things, the, the internet connection as well as internet safety. So I'm happy to introduce two of our Teacher Specialists. We have Sabrina, who is with us, Sabrina Jordan Ortega, and we also have Janee Fernandez, and they are going to present this afternoon. Once they are finished presenting, we will then open up the Q and A for questions, and they will also be with us again on our Wednesday evening town halls from 5 to 7. We will have another opportunity for our parents who aren't able to be with us in the afternoon. So, Teacher Specialists, I'll turn it over to you. Thank you.
Hi, thank you. Having trouble sharing my screen, so if somebody can help me with that, I'd appreciate it. My name is Sabrina Jordan Ortega, and I work with the Pomona EdTech Team. I'll allow Janee to introduce herself as well.
Hi, my name's Janee Fernandez. I also work with the EdTech Team. I primarily focus on elementary, but we work with, with all of our schools and in the district.
There we go, perfect. You're on mute, Sabrina.
Today, we're going to be covering four topics for you today. We're going to start with internet safety, and we're going to discuss Google Classroom and its platform. We're going to discuss the Parent Connect App, and we'll be reviewing the distance learning schedules again. If you would like to join us with this presentation, you can access it with the bit.ly that's listed here, so it's bit.ly/pusdfamilytechguide. It's also on our website. It is case-sensitive, so PUSD, the F in family, T in tech, and G in guide must be capital to access. If you're looking for resources in Spanish, you can find them in the notes section as well. So I'm just going to give us a couple of minutes, just in case parents would like to access the presentation. We're going to start by discussing our internet safety initiative. In PUSD, we have used Common Sense Media as a platform where teachers review lessons with students. We start with grade TK and go all the way through 12th grade. In the past, we've had teachers teach a minimal of three lessons a year. Due to distance learning and the additional time students will be on devices, we've increased that to a minimum of eight lessons per grade level. If you'd like to see some of those lessons, you're able to click here on the Common Sense Media link, and it'll take you to, to see the grade level lessons yourself if you're interested. Some of the topics that are covered on those lessons include cyberbullying, netiquette, digital footprint, and more. A lot of these topics vary and are age-appropriate depending on grade level, so something that they might see in first grade will look very different than what the 11th graders are looking at in terms of the topics and education modules. In addition to that, our department in here in EdTech regularly facilitate parent training, such as the one that we're going to review today. We're going to be going through this lesson here, Plugged in Parents for Grades K through 8. Again, the Spanish version is linked in the notes, if you'd like to access that as well. So Common Sense Media is a website that provides parents and educators with a guide for what, what kind of things should students be looking at on the internet? What should they look out for? They discuss topics such as screen time, being responsible online, and those kind of things. So you're able, as a parent, to go straight to the site. There's three tabs on the site, one's for educators and another one's for parents. I recommend the parent site. There's also a Spanish site as well. So one of the things that parents always ask about is our students are constantly on devices now. Students use their Chromebooks for instruction, but often in addition to the Chromebooks they use for instruction, they oftentimes have cellphones or their own personal devices and iPads and whatnot. So it's important that as parents that were knowledgeable about the types of programs that the students are using when they're on their devices. With that, we need to think about balance. So using the devices is good, but you also have to think about what else is my student doing? Are they getting enough sleep? Are they still connecting with family and friends? Are they engaged with their peers in school and pursuing interests and hobbies in, in the ways that they can during this time? And, and of course, we want them to have fun while they're learning in, with their digital media that they'll be using in the classroom in this coming up school year. Some things that we consider best practices when it comes to devices is really thinking about what kind of expectation and rules that you'll have for your student. So will there be a time when it's a device-free time, such as dinner? We definitely encourage parents to talk about advertising and its potential harm. Sometimes we know that we receive notifications when your, the student clicks on different links on their Chromebook, and we get access to those, the sites that they're visiting. So just making sure that students know when they're clicking on advertisements and why that might not be a good thing in some cases. We encourage teachers in our district to think about not only receiving lessons through the device, but also thinking about how students can become creators on the device, so active learners. We talk about digital citizenship, and we encourage parents that in addition to the teacher reviewing those in the classroom, that parents need to be having those same discussions in their own households. And then, of course, your, your students are going to be looking to you to be models for their behavior. So if you're asking them not to use their devices during dinner, then we need to model the same thing as parents and try not to use our devices during dinner as well, when possible. So some things to consider is what kind of applications, if you're allowing the student to use an iPad or device, what kind of apps are you allowing them to, to go to? So is, are they kid-friendly? Are they appropriate for your student's age level? And the Common Sense website, and you see it's here on the bottom right, can be found at commonsense.org, and they, they actually allow you to search not only apps that the student could be accessing on the website, but also movies. They give you information about if you're going to watch this movie with your child. Here are some things you should be aware of that's contained in that kind of media. So that's something to look out for as parents. We know that students vary from age to age as they develop, so some students, you know, be more careful when they're younger and having those discussions, and then allowing them to have some independence as they grow older and as appropriate. So some, this is a quote from a teen, so adults don't get it, they think I'm addicted to the technology, but I'm not. I'm actually addicted to my friends, and especially in the time we're in now, we have to consider that this is the only way for students to connect socially with their friends, is maybe through this video chatting or text chatting or through Instagram and that kind of thing. So making sure that we have that open line of communication with our kids about the appropriate use of social media and the levels of comfort you have as in your own family with what kind types of social media they should be interacting with. So it's important that because we know that our students are going to be using devices, that we are the training wheels for them, meaning that we are providing that education for them, we are giving them guidance, and that we're allowing them some independence as they move up in age level to, to be able to explore and to be able to use the internet responsibly. So what are some things that are, we know our students are doing online? We know sometimes our students are going to things like Instagram and Snapchat, and they're using video group chatting. So it's important for us as families to understand what things we should look out for in each types of, of apps. For example, especially amongst our boys, we have them doing video gaming, and in a lot of the types of video gaming students do now, it allows for the communication and interactivity with other people on the web. So as parents, we need to be conscientious of who, who are the kids talking to, if they're talking to anyone, and do they have their privacy settings set appropriately when they're using social media applications? So some things that are, we consider red flags and things to look out for, is, is it age-appropriate, our content? Are we using, allowing our students to use apps with public default settings instead of setting them to private, and we'll talk a little bit about that later? Are we allowing the app to track location? So these are all things to consider. In-app purchases, so I'm sure as parents, we have, if you've ever handed your child your cellphone, they might just land on a, an application that asks them to click on something that takes them to another page where they, they might be asked to purchase additional items, so that's something that the students need to look out for. Is there anonymous people chatting with them? That's a big red flag, so to definitely be aware of these things. And how do you know if your child's experiencing cyberbullying? So if you're not having those kind of conversations, then the students may not share that with you, so it's important to have that open line of communication. Almost all the grade levels in terms of the teacher education modules, they address cyberbullying and things to look out for, for the students, but it's also important to continue those conversations in the home. One of the major things that we talk about with students, especially is when they get up to the tween or teen ages, is making sure that they think before they post, and we reiterate that over and over and over to students, because sometimes it's really easy to snap a picture and to send something, or to say something, and not think about it in the moment, or not think about what implications it may have for the future. So the self-reflect before you self-reveal, very important conversation to have with students, especially if they have their own cellphones and that kind of thing already. For all social media apps, and a lot of, a lot of them allow you to, to set your privacy settings, so this is very important. If you're going to allow your child to use something like Snapchat or Instagram, and that's a choice you've made in your family, to make sure that you're aware of how to turn in, turn on privacy in those particular settings, and each type of app has different settings, levels, but to look out for those private accounts so that you know that your child isn't talking to anyone that, but maybe just their friends are connected to them. So they still have that communication with their friends, but in a safe manner. And we've, we've all seen this now in the media, that keyboards can make us careless and cruel, so sometimes it's easier behind the screen to type something that can be harmful or, or mean about another person. So those kind of conversations, if you're not having them with your child, they may not tell you that it's happening to them. So it's important just to check on them, to have those conversations, and so not make it about them at first, but maybe just to conversate, well, what would happen if somebody said something mean to you? What should you do? So having that open line of communication would be important with your child. So some of the things that are encouraged in the education modules that they'll see in the classroom are making sure that they report any abuse or anything that's made them feel uncomfortable online, that we encourage upstanding, so it's not enough, if you know what's happening to someone, you need to tell somebody that kind of idea. Collecting proof, you know, a lot of students are very good at taking screenshots and those kind of things, but because sometimes things are posted on the internet and then deleted, to make sure that they've collected the proof and they know how to do that. Involve others, so they have somebody they trust to talk to. And then limiting online access, so this is big. We will talk about briefly about securely later on, but our Chromebooks do provide parents with a free application that allows you to set or pause the internet so that if you're, let's say, going to work and you work a night shift and you're leaving at 9 o'clock, you can turn off their online access, well, at least to the Chromebook, while you're not home. So there are ways to limit that, and that's something that should be considered by our families if that's a concern. These are the categories that our digital citizenship lessons cover for our education modules. So you'll see internet safety is big across the grade levels, but we see things like self-image and identity, relationships and communications, which are more prevalent to our secondary students. So these are just some of the topics that the lessons will cover, and again, feel free to use the link in the presentation to review any of the lessons or to ask any questions about those lessons as well. So we know that there's some interesting things posted all over the internet, and, and a lot of times if we're not careful, sometimes we're not completely aware of what it is our students are doing online. So it's very important to check in with them, to have those conversations, because you, you never know what your child is accessing on the internet if we're not careful. So yes, our Chromebooks have filtering. I do want to reiterate that if the student's using a PUSD device, that those filters will block them from going to inappropriate sites and those kind of things, but we should also be aware of what our child is doing anytime they're online as much as possible. So for, for, for parents, just helping our child make good choices, can't restate this enough, that we need to check what they're doing, whether you're monitoring their security reports, or you're checking their browsing history, it's very important, and that you have those follow-up chats with your child as well, just to check in and make sure that they're feeling confident and that they're not experiencing any type of cyberbullying or anything like that. And then, again, this links to the site. We mentioned before that there's three tabs, so one for parents, we have a tab for educators and for advocates, but it's the parent one that I'm going to really direct you to from this website, because it has a lot of great information for parents. So there's articles about screen time and how to know if your child has had enough screen time, two articles about how to have those conversations that we've been talking about with your child. And again, we can't also emphasize enough that we need to be models for the type of behavior we need to see from our students online, and making sure that we're ready to monitor and mediate. So if you need to step in because you're concerned that your child has been a victim of cyberbullying, or you're concerned with what they're accessing online, that you're able to step in and help them make the appropriate choices. Common Sense does have different family, family media agreements, if that's something that you're interested in. This one in particular that I'm showing as an example here is for grades 6 through 8, but they do have them for the lower grade level spans such as 3, 5, and even 9, 12. So if you wanted to just use this as a guidance to have those conversations with your child, it's a great resource to have. So how will students stay safe, for example? They'll make sure not to give out private information, such as their name, their address, photos, etc. So it just kind of gives you those talking points, and it's just a great reference for our families to use in the home. Again, the whole think first, I know that when I share online, it could spread fast and far, so I will not post anything that can harm my reputation, or hopefully not the reputation of others either. And then talking about stay balanced, not spend too much time in front of the screen when they can help it, and making sure that they continue to enjoy other activities besides their devices. So these family media agreements, there's a link to it in this presentation, but you can also find it again on the Common Sense website. So this is an interesting quote, it says, "Technology is going to help you, but it's not going to get away from the fact that you should be having more conversations about this with your kids." So just, you know, this is from Norton Security, and they do a lot of like spyware and that type of thing, but it's important that, again, those conversations are critical. We emphasize this with our teachers in the classroom, and we, we need to emphasize this as well, that these conversations are happening within the home. And then, again, we've, we've heard parents say anything from, "I'm just going to tell them, no technology, we're shutting it all down." So that's kind of harmful, especially when right now, this, it can be the only way that they have to communicate. If you think of our high school students, the way that they use social media right now, or the way they use the internet, video calling, it's the only way they have to connect with their friends if they're not seeing them in person. So maybe instead, we learn to build up and help them use the technology responsibly and effectively in that way. Again, Common Sense Media has various aspects for parent support. They have their own Facebook page, Pinterest, etc., and of course, you can go straight to their website. So definitely something to check out as a parent. And I know, I don't know, Kristiana, if we're going to take a moment to get some questions and answers, if we wanted to go ahead and move on to discussing Google Classroom.
Thank you for that, Sabrina. Thanks for the presentation. There was a question, I'm just looking at the ones that are specific to the presentation. One of the questions that we had had to do with online security and the use of different platforms. I think you had addressed the YouTube firewall, for example, in terms of our district devices and being able to block some of that access. There was a question related to the security of a platform such as Zoom over a, a Google Meets platform, and how we are working to secure whichever platform is going to be used for the distance learning.
Sure. In our district, we've been primarily using Zoom, and some teachers have even utilized Zoom and some teachers have even utilized Google Meet. We've instructed teachers to take precautions such as using their waiting room and making sure that they're admitting the appropriate student. And teachers have the power to turn off the participants' cameras in case there's a problem with the particular student. So those are all things that we are training our teachers on to make sure that we are using those platforms responsibly.
Perfect. Thank you for that. I think we can go forward because some of the other questions in the queue, again, if we don't see those addressed, we'll come back to those at the end. But they are related to the other topics that we have, for example, distance learning and the more information about Google Classroom. So we'll go through from here and then we'll look at what has not been addressed in our Q and A. Thank you.
All right. So again, we're going to be talking about Google Classroom and just a little bit of an overview of what Google Classroom is and how it'll be utilized coming up this this fall or when school starts. So Google Classroom is a web-based learning environment. It's a place for teachers to communicate and collaborate with their teacher, with their students, and for students to collaborate with each other. The ways the teachers will be using it in their classrooms is it's it's going to be like a hub in essence. So it's going to be a place where students will be able to come to get assignments from teachers, where teachers will be able to post assignments for students. And it's a safe, controlled environment where everything will be held together in order for students to turn in work, for teachers to accept work, and communicate with their students and so forth. The way we use Google Classroom in PUSD is that only authorized PUSD users, so teachers, students, and other designated staff members are able to use the platform. We can't add or teachers aren't able to add outside emails or emails that don't contain our PUSD domain. So, for example, parents wouldn't be able to join a Google Classroom or no other outside person would be able to join. So it's it's a controlled environment that we have and that teaches where teachers are able to communicate with with their students. So some of the things that teachers use Google Classroom for is class activities, like I mentioned before, announcements, assignments, questions that teachers have or pose for student discussion. They're able to post all of that in a Google Classroom. Any work that's due or anything that that the teachers need to make sure the students know about will also be posted in the Google Classroom. The way that parents are able to be a part of the Google Classroom and to know what students, what the students' work assignments are for the day or for the week, or know which assignments are missing are through the Guardian email summaries. And so that's going to be an invitation that will be sent to a parent's email address. So parents need to make sure to look for when the teacher, I'm sure the teacher will send out a communication that this is available with it with their Google Classroom. And parents need to look out for that email so that they'll be able to accept and join the, accept the Guardian summary request and join to be able to receive Guardian email summaries. And then with those summaries, parents will be able to see any announcements, they'll be able to know which assignments are upcoming assignments that their students need to complete and also which assignments would their students are missing. As a parent, you're able to set your communication or the the amount of communication you would like to receive from a teacher. So if you want daily communication, that's something that you would be able to set. If you prefer weekly communication, that's also a a setting that you'd be able to set in the email summary. So when you set that up, you just need to make sure that you click the amount of information that you are, the the how often you want the information to be shared. So that's a little bit about Google Classroom. This link here will take you to a parent guide to Google Classroom. It takes you to our web, our EdTech website where you're able to see that there are some tutorials for parents on Google Classroom. So we have an English and Spanish tutorial, and it's it's really just a little guide to walk you through Google Classroom where you'll be able to see how to access work, what, and it's in the student view. So you'll be able to see what your students will be able to view when they go into their Google Classroom, how to accept their teacher's request to join their Google Classroom and so forth. And then there's also a guide here for parents. So it talks a little bit about what is Google Classroom, how to sign in, and so forth. So this is just another resource for for parents to be able to use so that they can know a little bit more about Google Classroom. Um, let me go back here. So again, if there are, and I know we've done some parent trainings on specific use for Google Classroom. And so that I'm sure that that will be available again. So going through the Google Classroom and how to use it, we will be conducting those trainings once again. So I believe our next topic is Sabrina, what are we going to next? Parent Connect. We wanted to see if there's any questions, Ms. Fox. Parent Connect.
Beth, we'll go through the the other sections and then we'll do the rest of the QA after. Many of the questions, I believe, will be answered as you present. Thanks for checking.
Okay, so on slide 21 of the presentation we shared, we talk about, there's a slide for Parent Connect. So Parent Connect is accessible on the web. It allows you to get real-time access to student information. So we can see if the teacher is sharing things like grades and behavior, it will, that information will be there. If you are interested in seeing attendance for your child, their food service, things like that, they're all available on Parent Connect. What's new this year is that there is an app available to parents. It's called the Parent Connect app so that you can more easily see this content on your phone. So we'll go ahead and look at that app and what it looks like on your phone now. So to find the the Parent Connect app, you'll go to your App Store, whether you're on an Android or iPhone, Apple device. Go to the App Store and you'll type Q parent connection, and that should take you to this app here. Once you install the app, the first time you go on, it's going to ask you to give the information of your state, county, and district. So you'll go ahead and type that in. It actually allows you to scroll, as you'll see on the bottom here, to pick the appropriate district. At that point of time, you will need your PIN and password. So if you do not know your PIN and password, of course, these are critical information now that we're in the re-enrollment process currently. You will need access to your Parent Connect PIN and password. So I know Ms. Ortiz helps with that a lot. Your school site can provide you with that information as well. So those will be critical for you to be able to use the app to access information. Once you log in, you will see that there are announcements, and this is at the district level. So so re-enrollment, it's asking, you might need to reset your password. Some information available from the district will be on the first window when you log in. Once logged in, you'll see different links here. School Links provides information directly from your school, so it could be something that the administrator has put up such as, you know, typically back to school night, or remember it's the first day of school on this day, that kind of thing. You might see attendance, class behavior or assignments, if the teacher is sharing gradebook information. Enrollment, so let's look at a couple of these, for example. When you open the app, you'll see any students connected to you. So this is an example student here, called Elementary. It could be that you see one student, or if you have several children, you may see more than one. And so you would select the appropriate student you wanted to find information on. Something that's very important and critical as a parent is to make sure that your contact information is updated. So if you recently changed a cellphone number, or you wanted to add somebody else to your emergency contact list, that you're able to do that within the app itself or during the re-enrollment process. So the app will allow you to look at the information that the district currently has for your child, just to make sure, to double-check, to make sure that it's accurate. I I definitely recommend that you check this regularly throughout the year, just to make sure that there's nothing that needs to change. You'll also see other information. So if you click back on one of the links, again, School Links will tell you anything that the school is giving you information on. In attendance, if your child was marked absent for any reason, you would find that information on the attendance information under that tab there. Under enrollment, you'll find information such as what grade level your child's in, what school they're attending. Any previous schools they may have attended would be there as well. So again, that information, if you want to just check on it to make sure for accuracy, you're able to do that. Any legally binding information, so if you have a guardianship, something that's in place that the school should be aware of, that information should be there. And if you don't see it there, please make sure that you ask the school about that or update your information on the Parent Connect, either on the app or the website as well. Medical history, this should also load, so any any kind of immunization records and things, any nurse visits, or if your child has a particular allergy, it'll be noted here, and you should make sure that it's noted here because this is what the school has access to and would need to know. Information such as your school library accounts or your food account balances, that's available as well on the app. Demographics, so if you wanted to look for accuracy, again, it tells you your student name, the school they went to, their age, things like that will be available here for you to see. Pictures to identify the child, and that's a way, sometimes I know that our teachers before, sometimes they've never met the student, they don't know who their new students are, so they like to look through pictures that they have access to, just to see like, who do I expect to see in the classroom and that kind of thing. So they use that information. And we have a flyer that just kind of goes through the the different steps that we talked about here to get started with the Parent Connect app. So again, just to reiterate, your step one is to go to your App Store, whichever one you use, and do a search for Q parent connection. Once that app is installed on your phone, you will be asked to enter these three information, the state, the county, and then your district. And then once that's entered, and you only have to enter that the first time, I believe, the next thing you'll see is the introductory window and that has any announcements from the district. Once you review that information, you'll be asked to type in your, again, your PIN and password. So I know that I am terrible about keeping track of this information, but the district's always very helpful with providing it as well. So the school site can give it to you. I know in the parent center, they have resources to access that information as well. And then finally, once you have your PIN and password, once you enter that information, you're able to access the apps and all the areas that we talked about today. So things like grades, health information, very critical, contact information on who should be contacted in the event that your child needed to go home or that kind of thing, and when we're in the typical school year, school day. So that information's all there for you in the app. Of course, if you don't choose to use the mobile app, you can still find all of this information on the Parent Connect web-based portal as well. Do we have any questions that we need to address regarding the app at this time?
Nothing at this time. Go ahead, and some may come in after, and so we'll address them when they come in. Thanks, Sabrina.
You're welcome. And Janay is going to continue to talk about the distance learning schedules that have been shared. All right. So I'm just going to go over the distance learning schedules that have been shared so far. We have the transitional kindergarten distance learning schedule. Again, this schedule is it will be the morning and afternoon groups or cohorts for distance learning on Mondays and Tuesdays and Thursdays and Fridays. On Mondays and Tuesdays, the AM transitional kindergarten group will be live, live with the teacher, live with the teacher, meaning the teacher will use Zoom to meet with the students or work with students in small group. And then the morning group or cohort will also be meeting with the TKs on Thursdays and Fridays from nine to eleven forty, and then from twelve twenty to three. So in the afternoon, the afternoon group will meet with the teacher and have live interaction with the teacher, again, meaning either Zoom meeting or working with, in groups with students. We have the kindergarten through sixth grade distance learning schedule, where here we have built-in time for students to get breakfast. If they're going to get breakfast, we have from seven thirty to eight fifty. That time is available for students who need to go and get breakfast breakfast from the schools. So school will be starting at eight fifty, so we have eight fifty to ten thirty on Mondays and Tuesdays. Group A or Cohort A will be live, live interaction with teacher, meaning Zoom or small group. And Group B will be personalized learning program and independent learning, meaning they'll be working on their own with the support of of anything that the teacher has set out for them or assigned to them and other learning programs that we have available here at PUSD. On Wednesdays, the students will be working on independently, on independent learning. And then Thursday, Friday is when Group B will be live with the teacher and Group A will be working on their learning programs and independent learning. We have a lunchtime built in, so we have twelve fifteen to twelve forty-five, a thirty-minute lunch. And then again, so just to be clear, Mondays and Tuesdays is the day that Group A or Cohort A will be live with the teacher, working directly with the teacher, and Group B will be working on their independent learning. And then Thursdays and Fridays is when Group B will go live with the teacher, and then Group A will have interact personalized learning, so learning independently. Group B also has live interaction time on Tuesdays in the afternoon, so they switch in the afternoon from two, two o'clock. And then again, on Thursday, Friday, distance learning, Cohort B will be distance learning and Cohort A will have live interaction with teacher. For middle school, it changes just a little bit. We have three periods where the the students or Group A will be live with the teacher. So from eight AM to twelve thirty, we have Cohort A live with the teacher for first, second, and third period. And at that time, Cohort B or Group B will be independent learning on Mondays and Tuesdays. On Wednesdays, all of the students, both groups, will be doing student distance learning and independent work. And on Thursdays and Fridays, Group B will be live with the teacher and Cohort A or Group A will be have having independent learning and personalized learning time. This is all in the morning from eight to twelve thirty, then they have a built-in lunchtime there. And then from eleven forty-five to one o'clock, we have Cohort A live with the teacher, Cohort B will be independent. And then we also have Cohort B live interaction with teacher right after that on Mondays and Tuesdays. And then in the afternoon, after two o'clock, the teachers will be having time to prepare their lessons. On Wednesday in the afternoon, we have daily live interaction with teacher. So we have these times assigned for interaction with teacher. On Thursdays and Fridays, we have Cohort B live with the teacher, Group A independent learning, and then Group A live interaction with teacher. So that was the high school schedule, and the middle school schedule is very similar to that one. And then we have for our dual immersion distance learning schedule, these are the students who are in our dual immersion program. So they'll have Mondays and Tuesdays, Group A or Cohort A will have a live interaction with their teacher online in English and then in Spanish or Mandarin in from twelve forty-five to, I mean, ten forty-five to twelve fifteen. And then Group B will be in personalized learning. On Wednesdays, they'll have personalized learning for both groups, Group A and Group B. Thursdays and Fridays, we have Group B. live with the teacher in English first and then in Spanish or Mandarin. And then Group A or Cohort A will be personal, will be working on personalized learning. The afternoon is similar with now Cohort B going live with the teacher. Cohorts A and B, this is Mondays and Tuesdays. On Wednesdays, Cohort A and B will be live with the teacher. And on Thursdays and Fridays, Cohort B will be live with the teacher. So these are the same schedules that have been shared at previous town hall, town hall meetings with parents. I'm sure if we have any questions, we'll be able to answer those for you just as soon as we're ready to do that.
Thank you so much, Janay and Sabrina, for sharing this information. Before we get to the Q and A, I'm going to welcome our board member, Mr. Andrew Wong, and invite you to say a few words if you would like to, sir.
Thank you, Christiana, and thank you, Janay and Sabrina, for that wonderful presentation. I want to thank all of the parents who've joined us and who have been asking insightful questions, which I've been reading on the chat, and continue to reach out to board members and staff with their comments, questions, concerns. It has allowed all of us and the board and the administrators to think about these things and work to address them. And I hope that these questions and prior questions have continued to be addressed and will continue to be addressed either here or during, or at the school site video conferences as well. We are continuing to monitor and to develop things. The board members are all active in doing so, and being part of this is just one of those efforts to do so. So we really thank everybody involved. I want to thank again our staff and administration, but thank all of you, the parents, in order to make sure that this upcoming school year is going to be a great success for you and your students and PUSD. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wong. Thank you for joining us. We'll now go through our questions and have an opportunity to share some additional information. As we do so, I want to cover a couple of general questions that have come up. One of the questions that has come up frequently has to do with how do I get what I need for my child? So whether it's a Chromebook because your child is a new kinder or new to our district, or the books, paper, pencils, crayons, glue, all the things that go with learning, we will make sure that we get those items to each family. Schools are working on distribution schedules now. We also will have backpacks for students, and we know that backpacks are part of that whole mindset of going back to school. So students will be receiving supplies, and we want to work with you to create that optimal learning environment for them at this time. The other question came up with the access in terms of information from the schools. We just completed our Administrator Institute last week. And what we're doing now is each school site is going to be reaching out to you. I know some of you have expressed that you're waiting to get information about who is my child's teacher, what cohort or group is my child assigned to. All of that information is being prepared now, and it will be coming out to you this week. The actual specific teacher assignment may be the following week, maybe just before we reopen schools. That's because right now we are working on master schedules. So whether it is at the high school, for example, Gary High School, trying to put 1,700 students into six periods that all balance out with our teachers, or whether it's a school site such as Montview, which has a much smaller population, but still, we need to balance and assign classes. That is the work that is happening right now. As long as you have completed your re-enrollment, and if you haven't done so, please go into that same Parent Connect system that we shared with you earlier and complete your child's re-enrollment, because that is going to give us the most up-to-date information so that we can connect with you. Sites are going to be reaching out to families. The cohort assignments are being worked on now. One of the things that we are doing as a system is loading students into those groups by families so that you can have your children on a similar schedule. So please know that those are the things that we're working on now. And again, you can expect information coming out to you from your school sites this week. Another question I had had to do with how can a teacher work online, watch the chat, watch the cameras, attend to everything that's going on in that online environment? And that's a real question in terms of the circumstance. But I also want to share with you that this is something that we've had some practice in the spring, but we're coming back in with a lot more training, a lot more preparation as a system. Also, for you to know that the teacher will be the primary one assigned to that classroom. However, instructional aides, counselors, administrators, all of the individuals that would normally physically walk in and out of a classroom will be able to do so electronically, because that's the only way we can support our students. And so there will be a team, you know, working to ensure that this distance learning is a rigorous academic program, and it is not the same remote learning that we ended with in the spring. So please know that we are working very hard to get ready for your students to come back to school and to have a program that is really designed to meet their needs. The terminology that we use, and I know that Sabrina and Janay covered it in terms of the cohort and the distance learning and the independent personalized, we have a lot of terms. So let me start with the fact that cohort is a word for group. So if we say Cohort A or B, we mean Group A or B that students will be assigned to. These schedules, as we shared previously, stay online, and you can look once you get that cohort assignment, because that's going to come with your teacher assignment as well. We're going to work to get that out to you as soon as possible, because we know that as parents, you're doing your best to get your schedules organized, to be ready to work with your child. We've had several questions regarding attendance. How can my child attend when I'm at work and I'm not able to supervise the instruction? Those are things we are still working on within the requirements that were given as a district to calculate attendance. And so that's a work in progress. So we want you to know that we hear you loud and clear in terms of the concerns, and we're working to see how soon we can have those schedules ready for you and what options we may have in terms of accommodating attendance. So again, it is a work in progress. Regarding the actual online, I'm going to go through some of the questions. I know that also Mr. Martinez mentioned a waiver request at the beginning, and the question came in as to whether that will include special education students. And it will, it will be, it will address all of our students within our Pomona Unified School District system. So please know that that will be taken care of. And Sabrina and Janay, if you'll bear with me, I'm going to go through the questions, and as they relate to the presentation, then I'll turn to you. That'll help me to keep track and hopefully not miss any of the questions coming through. The one-to-one, there was a question about will my child get a chance to get to know his or her teacher? Will there be a one-to-one opportunity for my child to get to know their teacher, getting, you know, coming in new to the district, coming in new to schooling? And so teachers will have office hours, and we will look at what is the best way to make that connection, because we realize that that's a really important part of the learning process, is for a child to feel connected to the learning. So that will be information that will come to you from your school site. There was a question about the Common Sense Media lessons, appreciating the lessons, and also wanting to know how we can integrate them into the classroom. And so I know the online safety is something that teachers will be addressing with students as well. So please know that that is ongoing. The, let's see, the independent, okay, there's a link for site-specific questions that we put into the chat. If there's a question about your particular student, we want to make sure that we don't ask student-specific questions in this format, that we protect your child's privacy. So we have posted up a link in the chat for that. I'm going to just briefly introduce Mr. Guzman, our board member as well. Thank you for joining us and invite you to share a few words with our parents, Mr. Guzman.
Hello. Sorry, I'm having a hard time hearing, but you can hear me now. I just want to thank you for the town halls. I think this is a great endeavor that Kristana and her team and the superintendent's office have undergone just to ensure that our parents are feeling that they are heard during these difficult times. And so I am certainly happy that we're doing these town halls. I do know from listening in on some of the previous town halls that there were a lot of questions around special education and DAPA and different things of that sort. So hopefully in the future, we could have town halls that are specific to those areas. I know I did already speak with Superintendent Martinez about that. He said those are in the works. So I think those will play a major role in the families' lives who are dealing with issues regarding special education. So, but I just wanted to drop in, say hello. I hope everyone is doing well. I know it's just been a few days since we've had our last town hall, but I'm looking forward to an amazing year and addressing the concerns along with the team of experts who are doing an amazing job with what they're doing. So that's pretty much all I have to say today, but I appreciate you guys taking time out of your day to participate in these town halls. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Guzman. Thank you for joining us. A question, Sabrina or Janay, this has come up a few times. Parents are asking if they have their own laptop or students have their own laptop, can they access the online learning using their private devices?
Is that a question for me or for who?
Oh, no, Mr. Guzman, I'm sorry. We're back to our presenters.
Sure, they are able to access the content. Particularly important that they sign into the Chrome browser. The Chrome browser will allow them to use their Google apps. Although we do emphasize that we would like the students to use the district-issued devices for two reasons. One reason is that we do have the Securly app and filter so that we know that the students are safe online. And the second reason is sometimes students' personal devices have different functionalities and abilities than the student-issue device. So sometimes the teachers are not aware of what device they're using, or maybe they have a device that doesn't have a touchscreen, and the teacher's asking them to do some writing and math assignments, and then they're not able to do that because they don't have the touchscreen. So we really encourage students to use the district-issue device in that kind of case.
Thank you for that, Sabrina. I have another question regarding whether or not the lessons are going to be recorded, and that will be something I'll take back to our Ed Services team and bring a response back to you. I had another question regarding state testing and what that will look like. That is something that we're working on with our county and state offices. And as we get a little farther into the school year, we'll have some information for you as well. I had another comment, again emphasizing the need for the parent-teacher communication and how critical it is. We have a question regarding how students will be graded, whether it will be a combination of participation as well as performance. That is something that is going to be shared with you at your school sites. And again, that information is going to start coming out to families this week, because we want to be specific with that, and we also want to be clear in terms of the different levels. What does that look like in terms of participation, elementary versus middle versus high school? The question about will classes start at the same time? And the class times are consistent with what's posted on the schedule. And so that will be whether the student is in Group A or Group B, the start times on the schedules will still be there. I know, Sabrina, you had addressed these terms, and I think we're still asking just for some clarification between the distance learning, independent learning, and personalized learning. Would you like to tackle that one? You're on mute.
I'm going to go ahead and share this. I do want to get back to one question before I go there. That is just a reminder on Slide 8 and on our EdTech website, for technical support, we still have the Student Staff and Technology Request Form. So now is a great time, definitely before the first week of school, to make sure that your student's mic is working, to make sure that their Chromebook is able to turn on, to make sure that there's no issue with the camera. So just doing those tech check-ins. If the student hasn't used the Chromebook in a while, now's a great time to check on that, because we do anticipate that the first couple of weeks of school are going to be really busy with those kind of things. So for parents and students to get ahead with that, we highly encourage them to check those things out on their Chromebook and use the Technology Request Support Form if needed. In terms of our different terminologies, we did a presentation for parents on what we call Blended Learning. And that presentation is linked to Slide 29. And I highly encourage families to look at that. Distance learning and blended learning have to do with students working at the same time or doing synchronized learning with the teachers, which means what we traditionally think of as a classroom, the teacher's in front of the classroom, all the students are on the same page with the teacher all at the same time. We do have a lot of teachers who have been really great at learning how to blend in asynchronous learning, which means that the students are working at their own pace, and that gives them control over, maybe Janay needs to see the same example of how to do that math problem three times, maybe I just need to see it once. When teachers use blended learning items, they're able to do things like record their lessons or use recordings of other teachers' lessons to provide that student with that access to instruction that can be done anytime. And so this model is not new to some of our teachers, although some, you know, teachers vary. Some teachers are very traditional, and some teachers have been on this path for a long time now. So we are moving forward with making sure that all of our teachers are well-versed in blended learning and understanding the benefits it has to students. So when we talk about online live teaching, that's how we're doing this session at this time. I am talking, everyone is listening to me, we're all on the same page at the same time. Asynchronous learning or personalized learning has more to do with, the teacher has now provided assignments, some assignments may be differentiated. So I'm a Pomona parent as well, so I have two students in the district, and their needs are very different. I have one child that's in special education program, so she's not able to complete the same level of work that my other child is able to do. So those, these technology tools allow for that kind of differentiation. So maybe one gets a math set with 20 problems, and the other one gets a math set with four, because it's going to take her just as long to do the four problems as it takes the other's child to do the 20. So utilizing blended learning or personalized learning, teachers are able to make more of distinguished path for the student depending on their needs. And they do so by using different tools. So some of you, if you've ever seen your child use Flipgrid, allows a child to explain their thinking in a video format, and I encourage you to look at that example on that slide. We, Janay talked about Google Classroom earlier. Google Classroom in itself, on the teacher's side, allows teachers to post one assignment for most of the class, where maybe a group of five kids get a distinguishly similar but different assignment. So that allows for, and the students don't know that they got different ones. It's just on the individual student. So that allows for those opportunities, again, to personalize the learning for your students. And some of the other tools that parents, I'm sure, saw in spring were very fabulous tools like Seesaw that allow for that interactivity and things to be done online. So blended learning, although in personalized learning, maybe new to a lot of our parent community at this time, but some of our districts, especially our Phase 1 schools, who started the 121 Chromebook initiative earlier, have been moving forward on this path for a long time. And I'm sure some of parents have seen some of those distinctions when we went to distance learning, where they might be helping one child just get started with Seesaw, and they don't seem to know where to go or where to find things online to students who were able to transition quickly because their teachers were already using these tools so prevalently in the classroom. So those are just some things to consider. But again, when we talk about distance learning, the teachers will be providing some instruction or some assignments with tools like Seesaw, where students can access video instructions or written instructions or voice instructions from the teacher, and then while being able to complete the actual assignment right on the webpage itself, whether it be that they're taking a picture of their work, whether they're videotaping themselves explaining a subject, or they're just writing out their math work, as you see the example on the screen. or they're just writing out their math work, as you see the example on the screen I'm showing. So all of these tools are available for our parents and teachers. And we'll be continuing to train. We did a lot of teacher training. We did a summer conference with teachers who were willing to participate. And we'll be doing some more of these trainings preparing for fall as well.
Thank you, Sabrina. So I'm going to go back and look at our questions and see what we may not have addressed. There was a question regarding how many students will be in the classroom when we return on campus. Those numbers are going to be determined by our Department of Public Health guidelines and what is considered to be safe as far as social distancing and also the use of personal protective equipment. And so if we keep the same split with the Groups A and B, we'll have to look at the numbers. And we'll also have to look at a particular classroom to make sure that whatever the guidelines are, that we can accommodate them in each classroom. So we will know more information as we get closer to having our students return on campus. Another question has come up regarding our instructional schedule and how well we will adhere to the schedule and supervision of the instructional schedules. I just want to reply that we will continue the same supervision as far as instruction as we have always done. It will just be done in a distance learning format. So the site administrators will still be in charge of supervising instruction for their respective sites. And our teachers have done, again, quite a bit of training and will continue an ongoing professional development schedule so that we will have that rigorous academic program in place for our students. I wanted to take a quick, just a quick break and introduce Mr. Fernando Mesa, who is our Assistant Superintendent for Public and Community Services and Facilities. Mr. Mesa, would you like to share anything with our parents?
Hello, folks. Welcome again. Thank you for joining us. We just wanted to share with you, we're here on the maintenance and facility side, working on making sure all the classrooms and schools are ready to receive your children once we're able to have the opportunity to host them again.
Thank you, Mr. Mesa. So the next question we have is about, and it goes back to those definitions around independent and personalized learning. Sabrina, I'll give this one back to you. This is about how will we also look at accelerating learning for our students who are at or above grade level? Oftentimes, we think about intervention to bring students up to grade level, but also how would we address the needs of our students who are looking for acceleration in the distance learning format?
Sure, so our school district uses some tools, and I'll just use one example in this case, such as Achieve 3000, which is used in grades three and up. But what that kind of program does is it allows students to take a placement. They kind of are able to identify their certain like reading range, and they're able to work based on their outcomes at their own level. So you might have a student be working at grade level or reading content that's just below their grade level or even above their grade level. So some of those personalized learning tools that we use in some of the schools allow the students to be able to work at a level that's personalized to them. In addition, where we talked about some of the distance learning activities, teachers, because they had the freedom to differentiate some of the assignments in Google Classroom, are able to challenge the students as needed. So that's also available to them.
Perfect, thank you. And then I had a question regarding if we can share just some of the online programs that the district has adopted in terms of distance learning. Where can parents see a list or a grouping of those particular programs?
Sure, so again, I'm just going to go ahead and share my screen. One of the things that this particular presentation shows you, and I left off on Seesaw, there are common apps such as Kami, Hair Deck, and EdPuzzle. These are all tools that your child's teacher will be trained and have access to as a district. But to see, to kind of get a sense of what kind of other applications are available, I encourage parents to look at their student's Clever page. Now, if the student is on a device, it actually automatically opens up to their Clever webpage. So they'll see this in their Chromebook. The Chromebook automatically opens to this particular page, and it gives them access to any apps their teacher is using. So on the very top level, they'll see teacher resources. So it's anything their teacher has specifically provided for them. But if you scroll down, you will look under Personalized Learning Resources, and you will find applications that the students will be using in the classroom. So common things are things like Xern, which is available, will be all available to all our K5 students, and it supports our math instruction with Eureka Math. They may see something like, if you're a high school math student, Big Ideas. That's the curriculum or their textbook that we use in math at the secondary level. Ingenuity will be used as the supplemental online program for students to have access to content as well. So anything, if you take a chance and you're able to go to your child's with them on their Chromebook, you can see that these applications are there for them in the Clever portal. The Clever portal is a place where it's a single sign-on page that all the students have access to, and they'll just click into the particular application they're trying to get to, and it'll take them to the right place.
Thank you so much for sharing that, Sabrina. I had a question about the secondary schedule and just trying to understand the schedule. One of the things I want to make sure that we clarify, and I've had a similar question regarding the secondary schedule and a concern that students aren't getting all of their classes because we are addressing three classes at a time. What I want to make sure that we continue to clarify message to our community is that the students will be getting the same amount of instructional minutes for each class. The reason we have them grouped three at a time is so that the assignments and the rigor around those classes, it's something that we feel students can access better than having to do six different classes in a distance learning format. So the time for that first quarter with the first three classes, whether this is middle school or high school, it is the same amount of time. They're going to have double periods, if that might help to clarify it more, of instruction so that they will get the semester's amount of minutes for each of those periods. So we'll do three in the first quarter, and then we will do the other three in the second quarter. But the amount of instruction, the amount of time with the teacher is going to be the same by the end of the semester. So the same amount of minutes for each period, just doing three at a time in each quarter. And I just want to make sure, because we had some concerns from parents, that my child is not going to get all of the instruction, but they will. And teachers will also do a review at the beginning of that second semester so that the students who have not had those first three periods for an entire quarter will have a bit of a refresh before we go forward. So please know again that we will use the same amount of instructional minutes in doing the three classes at a time. The questions regarding special education. Parents are concerned that the services for students will still be available. We will provide the services based on the IEP within the distance learning format as is practicable. Some services will look different just based on the needs of the students, but we will be working with our special education teachers and our support staff and our support providers to provide that same rigorous distance learning experience for our students. So please know that that is our focus and that will be adhered to within the distance learning format to the best of our ability to do so. Request for response to emails going out to the sites. Again, you will see the communication pick up now with our different school sites as we prepare for the return to school. So they will be pushing general information out to parents, but also more specific information regarding that particular school information, such as the equipment that students will need for distance learning and distribution of those materials. So please know that that is happening, and it will be picking up starting this week. How will we check for learning outside of the live interaction? A number of different ways. One of the things that we're looking at, as we spoke earlier about participation, we're looking at how students are responding to the instruction, the work products that they produce. And we will continue to do so throughout the quarter and throughout the semester. So the distance learning, again, is that rigorous academic program. That is why the students will be graded, and we will be checking attendance as well. Let's see here. A question about when we'll switch back to the traditional schedule. As Mr. Martinez shared earlier, that is something that we are working with our county and state offices through our Department of Health and other providers so that we bring students back on campus as it is safe to do so. We will be looking at the quarter check. And as that information comes, we will share it with our communities. We do know that this is a challenge for parents, trying to work out their work schedules and childcare as well. So we will get that information to you as soon as it is available. There was another question regarding instruction and if there will be any other additions to the instructional time. What we have right now on those learning schedules is what is in place. But we will continue to share the questions and concerns that are coming to us from the community. Another question says, do we have enough Chromebooks? That's an easy one. Short answer, yes, we do. For new students to the district or incoming students into Kinder. And again, that information will be shared with you through your school sites in terms of being able to pick up those materials. There was a question regarding dual immersion and the Group B schedule that may not conform with the Group A schedule. So we will look at that through our Ed Services team and bring a response back to you. Let's see, let me just check some additional questions. I want to make sure that we don't miss anything. Time slots. Will we use the Seesaw program moving forward? That question, Sabrina, said it was not used at the end of the last semester, but will we use it going forward?
Sure, all of our K8 teachers will have access to the program. And we will highly encourage teachers to use it. So we do have a huge interest in Seesaw as a district.
Thank you for that. And access to YouTube. One of our parents is wanting to know if we can restrict that access so that students aren't YouTube-ing when they should be logged in. I don't know if you have any information around that security.
Sure, we restrict certain programs on YouTube or certain categories. But if a parent would like to put additional restrictions on YouTube, they are able to do that using the Securely app. And just making sure that the parent that has concerns about that, I highly recommend adding the Securely app. You'll find information on how to download and use the app. That's in this presentation that we shared with you today. But it allows you to set limitations on when the students can use a Chromebook. And it also allows you to even do things like block YouTube if you don't want the students to use it outside of the instructional time.
Thank you for that. Another question, will adult transition program be doing distance learning in similar class schedules? Yes, all students will be on a distance learning format. We will be reaching out to you for those schedules specific to the adult transition program. But the answer to that is yes. The official start date of school and of distance learning is Tuesday, August 11th. So we're about two weeks out from the start of school. I do not see additional questions at this time in the queue. I'll just wait a couple of minutes just to make sure that someone isn't typing furiously trying to get the question posted. Also, as we're waiting, just to clarify that Wednesday at 5:00 PM will be our next town hall meeting. It will be a repeat of today's session, and there will be a Q&amp;A opportunity in there as well. If we have updates to some of the questions that were asked today that we need a little time to clarify, I will also be able to do that at that time. So just so that you know, and we will send out the website link again. The agenda will be the same, and that will be our format, is that Wednesday will be the repeat of the Monday Town Hall meeting. I don't see anything else in the queue at this point. Please know that we do review all of the questions, just in case something may have been missed. I do want to thank our presenters, Sabrina Jordan Ortega and Janay Fernandez. Thank you so much for sharing so much of that information from our online resources. There's a lot. And parents, please know, we'll continue to share with you. And please feel free to keep the questions coming because we know it's a lot of information for you at one time. But the website is available for you to peruse at your pace and then share with us any additional questions. Before I have Mrs. Marmalena Raimundo close us out, I'm going to turn to our Superintendent, Mr. Martinez, if you have some closing words.
Thank you, Dr. Walks Harper. Thank you, Sabrina and Janay. We appreciate your leadership, your support, and our parents do appreciate all the information. I've learned a lot today, so thank you again for giving us that information. Again, as you've heard from our board members earlier, from Dr. Walks Harper, join us, join us on Mondays and Wednesdays. And also feel free to write us. I think during this call, we received about five different messages from folks that are on this webinar, and they've been writing us on district emails. So continue doing that, and we will respond to those. And just to let you know, some parents have asked, who answers those questions? Do the board members answer questions that we write to them? Or who's doing that? So staff is responding on behalf of the board. I just want you to know that because if the board were to respond to all the questions that come into them, they would be writing all day and all night. So just understand that we divvy up the questions that come to us via email, and we are able to respond. The Board of Education does receive your questions. They also receive the responses. And then they have the opportunity to call you personally if they want to add more information. So again, thank you for being with us and for staff for educating us. And we will continue joining you on these calls, Dr. Walks Harper. A lot to learn, a lot to do. We do have two weeks before kickoff as far as the new year. We have a few days before staff will be coming in. So letters going out today. So I'm going to let you know, the Board of Education got this letter, I believe, on Friday that will let folks know that we're coming back to work because they've been working, everyone's been working from their homes. Some people can't leave this building, and they still come in on a regular basis or on an occasional basis, once or twice a week. And I thank you for your commitment at home, at the office. And so we're going to have more people. We're going to try to staggered schedules just to ensure that we're safe in our buildings throughout the system. We're anticipating that the Fourth of the month, that's the Fourth of August, our doors will be open so the public could come in and see a person and actually talk to someone. And that would be at school sites in our buildings. So that is the plan. I know some staff members are hearing that for the very first time. You're going to be getting an email shortly, and that's coming within the hour. But again, I just want our parents to know that we've been here at your disposal by phone. We're hoping to see you. As long as we're practicing one thing, and I do have, where is it? I lost my mask. So all we're asking you to do is when you come into our buildings, make sure that you have our mask, your mask. And if you don't, we're going to provide you one so you can come in and talk to us. So feel free to join us after August 4th. And our first day, as you heard, is August 11th. So again, thank you for all you do and for your support.
Thank you so much, Mr. Martinez, and thanks for hanging out with us with our town halls. We certainly do appreciate having you. I did get one additional question, and it is, are teachers available to kids when they are not online? One of the things we've always done throughout the school year is to share that ability for parents and for students to email their teachers, particularly at the secondary level. They tend to email more directly as students. So once you have your class assignments and your teachers' names, it's always firstname dot lastname at PUSD.org. And you can email your teacher that way, your principal, your counselor, and they will respond to those emails. So that will be in place as well for us during distance learning. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Mrs. Marmalena Raimondo. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Harper. Thank you, parents. Parents, we are always learning. And as we ask you to take this journey with us into distance learning, we know that each of us has a different comfort level regarding technology. Give yourself time to learn. Be brave and be patient and continue to practice. and continue to practice the new skills that you are working on with your children. This is a wonderful time to implement schedules and routines. Get excited about back to school in a different way. Get your children up and ready. Have a great breakfast. Get them started and prepared for the day. Keep in mind also motivation and encouragement is key. Encourage them to be good learners. Take responsibility for their learning. When you have difficulties, ask questions. Talk to your children every day. Check in with them just as their teachers would do. Ask them, what did you discover today? What will you be learning? We are so excited about what is to come. We do know that there will be challenges along the way. Managing stress will be very important, but working together will be the key to have success with your children. We thank you again, and we encourage you to keep logging on, continue to ask questions and assistance if need be. Thank you very much, and have a wonderful afternoon.